Gentlemen. And. Members and. Community members. It is four oh one, and out of respect for everyone's time, we're gonna go ahead and start. And I ask. Our board. As we get into old business and new business, allow me some flexibility on how we address. And proceed through the agenda. Please allow me that opportunity. So we're going to. Call the meeting to order. And uh. Let's go ahead and everybody get a chance to review. The previous meetings, minutes. For approval please. Any questions?
Like most approved, Miss Reed.
We're gonna jump right into um some new business. The first thing Sheldon and I would like to go ahead and and discuss and get before the board is this resolution for swimming pools.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Basically, we have an issue where. Uh, the current definition for swimming, the current definition for yards uh regulate swimming pool. And it's open, it's open ended, uh and there's no clarity there. And basically, there's no specification on where. Swimming pools are allowed, so it's assumed that they're allowed in all the yards. Uh, so the staff got with me and thought that we probably should address that somewhat. And so we did that through the resolution. And if you look at that particular resolution, what we're calling for is is to redefine uh yard. To take out uh the requirements on swimming pool rather than definition. About where they are, are to be located. And then we created a new uh under chapter three of general provisions. We've created a new set of provisions for swimming pool. And we were quite generous. We stated that swimming pool shall be permitted as accessory structure within side and rear yard only. And not the front yard. I think that was the issue with uh people wanting to place their swimming pools in the front yard and that's. Not always pleasing to the neighbors or people that are are going down a beautiful road. And so uh. I'm not gonna get into that any further discussion on that because I can get in trouble real quickly. Uh, but uh at any rate. If you all feel that this is necessary and you're willing to go with that and you don't believe that swimming pool should be allowed in the front yard. Uh, then you'd be great to 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 recommend this resolution to the county commission. I will say that if you want me to strike the language regarding the side yard out. I'll just be a nice, uh cause I know that they are peculiar shaped properties and everything and that uh. Uh, that's why we made allowance for the side yard. But if you all think that they ought to be in the side yard either. We can strictly amend the resolution for it to be strictly in the rear yards uh only. But uh at this particular time, I'm gonna be quiet and let you ask your questions and then we proceed.
At this time, do we have one located in the front yard?
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be grandfathered or took up?
Yes, sir.
It'd be grandfathered.
I think that was the issue that arose that sparked up the reason I come up with the resolution.
But that's only one of the having to just before we go to the front yard before we go.
And they could be some more.
I know.
Right.
That's brought the issue.
Right. But I, all those that are present currently, uh once the resolution is adopted, if it's adopted by county commission, they will be considered grandfathered.
Sheldon, you you handle a lot of municipalities, obviously. Uh, you know, I don't see how you do what you do as far as all this coke stuff. What what is everybody else's in regard to swimming pools? How do they exist?
They treat them.
Consistent with?
Right, right. They treat them as accessory structures, uh and they regulate them for the most part in the re- in the rear yards. Some communities uh it's possible real small, it's a number, make an allowance just for the side yard as well, but no community that that we know of allowing it.
I'm just thinking of maybe some individual and again, that's way out, his house is, say, two miles off the road and. And maybe he might not have it in the front yard, but maybe closer, you know.
In the side?
Yeah, or you know, maybe I'm just.
Well, that's why we put the provision in there for the side yards, uh cause we know that they're gonna be peculiar shaped uh. Properties although that the minimum not even is one acre and more, but we know they are peculiar shaped properties in the county and uh. That's why we made that allowance for them to be in the side yard as well. If y'all wanna take that provision out, if you wanna keep uh, let them be allowed in the front yard, that's.
Sounds like your problem.
Sound like you're saying if they are in the country, you may have a swimming pool, two hundred, three hundred yard in the front before you can get to the house.
Yes, sir, kind of in that that vicinity. I, you know, not specifically in the front, I wouldn't wanna pull in my front yard, but you know. To each its own, you know what I'm saying? I mean, but. I would want a swimming pool period, but.
Yes, sir. Michelle, I would say that uh uh given that line of thinking that if we were gonna go down that road. I would think that if we were to allow the swimming pools in the front yard, that there would need to be screen and buffer and fenced and everything else. And everybody don't want to see certain things.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
If for instance, somebody's paying part of the side yard on that. Guys later on food. Maybe they don't have rooms for some time, except the children in the back. Or the provisions for them to come come before us, that might be.
Well, that can go forth towards on appeals, but there's merits uh and that would be a call for a variance uh because of the peculiar.
Right.
A condition of the ground. Oh, the second uh place of permission.
I have a little problem telling people what to think of doing with the front dish.
I I.
I understand, it's got to be done. We're talking about.
We we're talking about those. Those swimming pools and bring and inground in it. The only other option, if you all are not ready to to act on this today, you wanna think about it some more. You all can tell me to come back. After you all thought about it some more, tell me to come back with uh something else with the buffer in the front yard. We'd advise against that, but uh at the end of the day, we'll do what you.
But even if, even as it's written here now, for example, if this was passed today in sense of the county commission. You're you are stating that they do have the right to come before the zoning.
Oh, yes, they have, they have the right and they want.
We could look at at particular circumstances.
Right, yes, sir. If they got an issue in their backyard that they can't put the uh pool in the back or the side yard, the side yard is too close to the neighbor, whatever. Uh, then uh they have to go forth towards the zone.
So it's possible that they might could do that, but they probably need some strict stipulations in probably.
But that will come from the boards on.
Right. Sheldon. Has there been any consideration? As relates to the swimming pool issue, to differentiate between rural. Properties versus. Communities, because I think it's a distinct difference. I think we all would agree, if you're in a neighborhood and there's. A hundred homes in this community, nobody, and and these homes are on half acre lots or quarter acre lots or whatever. Everybody in this room would agree, you don't wanna swim a pool in the front yard. However, if you're in a rural area and you're sitting on five acres and you can't see your neighbors, et cetera, you've got all this buffer. I think there should be some leanings, and I personally think that the side yard, with an opportunity comes for the Board of Appeals, is sufficient. But I do think. That there should be a way to differentiate. Um. And put something in place that we can deal with it, with if it's in the community or if it's out in a rural area. Um, I would potentially like to see something that deals with that. I think that's where the board is stuck on, is what do you do with a person who owns thirty acres? There's nobody around him and he's got these issues that he wants to put. A pool on the side or in the front or or somewhere else where nobody's ever gonna see.
And that's my issue too. Uh, if you got a large property, you may wanna go front, it may not be in the front yard, but you could be a hundred yard down.
Right.
Yeah, I think some stipulation with respect to size of property.
The conservative part of me, which is a whole lot, I agree with y'all more on it, but things do change, you might have.
Right.
And then. What's the potential? I would buy this property, but I don't wanna see this lady in the moonroof uh in the front yard. Oh, the man. We gotta laugh, people, come on. This is, this is.
I I I is, is, can we, can 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 we table this? And. Come up with a solution? That you could present to us that that takes into consideration both.
Sounds like y'all are giving me homework to do. It sounds like that I'm gonna come back with a resolution that states uh with a third option. Uh, if you have copper buffer and a screen uh in certain circumstances that would prohibit. Uh, you from being able to put this in your side or rear yard, you could have it in the front. You got that homework aside. You'll bring it back.
I'm sorry, I do have glasses.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you, uh, you don't talk about what we need to most of everything, Jeff.
Table, you'll table, um, item eight, under section four. On the bridge, aye.
Aye.
Um, Sheldon, let's discuss, go ahead, Will, Jen, Ivan, I'll be please.
Yes, sir. I think that's a discussion on uh possible. Now, slaughterhouses used to be on appeal, but I think we have a gentleman in our audience here, but uh would like to discuss uh his potential. Endeavor uh before we go into detail within specifics in front of us uh this evening. So. At this time, Mr. Chair, I would refer the floor to. The gentleman on the coming forward.
By no means prepared for speech, but uh. I feel uh we're we're in need of this, you know, uh I have a ranch, about a hundred and fifty, I'm in the cattle myself. I've been driving hour, hour and a half to Mississippi, giving my tax money and my revenue in Mississippi, you know, to have my beef processed. I've talked to several other farmers, ranchers, uh that do a lot more farming, a lot more ranching than I do. They did the same thing, you know, it's. Hour, hour and a half away from from us to be able to do that. Not only would this bring revenue in, you know, for our community, you know, from town meeting, but you know, part of the county also. And the state of Tennessee. I know it seems like it's a small thing, but sometimes small businesses bring in lots of revenue, you know, people. Fill up gas whenever they drop cattle off down the process, you know, that that helps build our ranch, you know, I don't know if you know, that's that's where the. The revenue for our revenue system comes from is the fuel tax. Uh, but there's lots of things instead of just a small thing like. Supplying the community, you know, with a way to get their beef processed, you know, clean and nice. You know where your beefs come from, it's raised here in our community, slaughtered here in our community, through our design and our building is really immaculate. Windows in between the customer and the processing to where, you know, they see how clean and they see. What care it will take, you know, to process their food. But uh all the way down to the leather, that goes to the leather smith makes shoes, you know, it brings lots of revenue that people just don't see, one small business. That's what I propose.
What is your name?
Dante.
Type?
D A N T E, Dante.
Where do you, where are you located?
Um, Meade, Meade, uh, right off of Keene Road. I have four hundred fifty-nine acres there.
Is this facility, are you, are you planning on doing a USDA facility or custom facility?
Yes, USDA.
Do you, are you currently doing custom now on on your property?
I do not.
So you say that.
I'm gonna start out custom. And then go to USDA. I'm working with several people. Uh, a lot of inspectors, USDA inspectors. Uh, I have a list of the people that we've been working with and following the guidelines on like processed water, waste removal and all that. I have everything lined up. Just kinda waiting on.
Hey Sheldon, so so what do we currently have in place for?
We currently have in place now, deal, nothing. Uh, what we were talking about, uh apparently as you look in the packet there. Uh, we just, we we drafted some things that are closely derived from the capable uh resolution. But we we thought I, we we thought out that this would be, we start out as a possibility of the people in the county. Felt that this would be uh needed in the county. Uh, we started off as a use permit in the field in the FAR district. And we put a minimum lock size of twenty acres, uh setbacks for front yard, five hundred feet, uh. Uh, we, and then, you know, we might mess around with these numbers a little bit more, but this just gets started. Side yard, two hundred feet, rear yard, two hundred feet, distance from a residential structure, two thousand feet. Uh, commercial structure, a thousand feet, church or school, a thousand feet, municipality, uh half a mile. And then when we came to existence, slaughterhouse, said five miles, and then a lake, thousand feet. Uh, of course, we went on uh to state that a stream, a thousand feet, and water, a hundred feet. And then it starts talking about, we said that the federal, state, and all these permits and licenses must be, as we gathered. Appplied to the meeting of the board of zone appeals and you can see the the rest of the uh, you know, full regulations. Number four, we chew on that and eat all of that up that we got before you. There's an attorney general opinion that was rendered circa April of two thousand twenty-two, at least, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, that's germane, you can have a poll too, and said that. Uh. And basically, talk about blanket the regulating of these particular house, I mean, particular uh uh uses. And basically, the attorney, uh, he old pine that uh as long as these uh facilities are installed to agricultural use. And the property in which they're gonna do place is agriculture in nature. Basically, he can come up with all the regulations if you want to, they can do.
But, on the other hand.
That's an opinion, that's 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 his opinion, that's the attorney general.
But on the other hand, if they do, they've still got to be in compliance with all the things that already, right?
They have to be in the yard, so that's gonna take care of that for that just quick.
I have everyone listed that I'm working with, Ward Bridget, which is EPA in uh Jackson, Tennessee. We've been communicating back and forth, his design, processed water, wastewater, disposal. And all disposal of carcasses and stuff like that, we've designed with the EPA in mind.
Are you in the army, Pat?
Yes, sir. We're right there on the border, I'm a little way in the Madison district.
The way I already have deer, processing places deer.
I'm strictly cattle.
What, uh, you're not gonna do pork or nothing like that?
Strictly cattle. And there's no, there's no Lexington, uh, Mississippi, uh, that's the closest, they're an hour and a half away.
Yeah, I just wondered, do the places that process deer, they do, does it work?
No cattle.
Do they have to be alone?
I think they're all around there.
Uh, they probably already grandfathered in the county. I know the regulations don't uh don't touch them at all, so they probably already exist as part of the regu- uh, ninety-four when they got zoning. Or they came up under the guise of board of zone appeals, that I don't know, but they exist and they exist. Now, the, I think that uh this is not a slam dunk. So I would think that members of the public shouldn't be alarmed, this is that slam dunk, this is not a slam dunk, so just because we have an attorney general opinion. Uh, regarding this, I just wanted to be clear here, just put everything out there on the table, uh, to let you know what you're working with. Now, we can uh work with uh these individuals on a case by case basis. Uh, but I prefer, I would love to have something in the zoning resolution that protects our, the neighbors uh somewhat. But I'm going to, before we go into more specificity of what we already did as far as draft resolution, we might as well have our attorney take a look at these. Uh, and to to perceive how we are to perceive and move forward.
How big do?
Because currently, by you not regulating, they're not allowed.
How many cattle do you foresee yourself doing on a monthly basis?
Um, I start out with one a day is what I plan on, and I'd like to end up five a day.
So this can be a very small facility?
Right.
Sheldon, I guess this is for you. I mean, I, hey, I'm I'm a farmer, I, we have quite a few cows, our our chair, he's got cows as well, so. I mean, I I get where you're at, and it'd be written, you know, we we, I I get your point. My question, I guess, to Sheldon, is, is there any, and I think Mr. Chair was kinda heading in that direction too, you know. Who knows, you might become. A Tyson after it's all over with. I mean, you know, I I, I hope you do well at whatever you do, obviously. Man, but at the same time, is there any, you know, will there ever come a point where if you got, you know, where neighbors, where where it could become a protect, a contentious issue?
I I I would think that's why we still need to have some regulations on the book. Uh, you know, to protect everybody. Now, I I, we have to do some further study on whether or not there'll be a use permitted. Uh, by right, uh, not by right, a use permitted, excuse me, or a use permitted on appeal. We would love the the appeal, uh, go for the zone appeal because the zone appeals can put all kinds of safeguards. But you have to be careful with that because this is an agricultural state. And the only reason why the state, they, the legislation came about in nineteen thirty-five was to promise that you wouldn't touch it. That's, that's been the the governing rule through the states uh. And zoning existence. Uh, so with that being said, I hate to talk like an attorney when I'm not going. I like to be straight up and talk straight up and uh and not get into the nuances. Uh, but when you're dealing with law, y'all can kind of get into nuance. So. Uh, I know this is a, this is a a touchy, delicate situation, but I think that it's something that could be worked out. With our local farmer and the citizens. I think that we can come up with something that we can all, that everybody can agree with, uh, to to keep, you know, uh, you know. It's keep uh people, keep the spirits down, as they would say, and keep everybody at minimum in what they can live with, I think that's the way to proceed. I wouldn't wanna. Slam the door on anybody, but at the same time, we don't want any nuisances uh running our good people off and pay taxes too. So it's a, it's a rule.
It sound like it would be a question of size, it's like if you talk in one to ten or fifteen a day, that ought to be your category. You wouldn't wonder if you'll get five to a thousand. Cows in this line.
In the FDA, I consider, you know, I was applying for a small facility. And that's this, you know, the, that's the facility that uh Ward Bridget and I have been talking about, and there was a size in there, it was actually, it was up to fifteen a day. And that was the limit, and I was staying out, won't be five. Uh, I don't proceed, it's a family operation, I don't have enough children to do one by. So it's kinda.
Let let me say this, and it's. The services that they're proposing is neat. I've done just as much research on on this issue as as you probably have, because. Uh, we own our own meat label, we supply beef and pork and lamb throughout the state. And it's been a financial struggle. To have the product processed in a cost effective, timely manner. Because the closest USDA facility we have to Harlan County is in Fayette County. And everybody who slaughtered cattle on a USDA guideline knows that you can call Rickmans, not, excuse, not Rickmans, cause that's in in Corinth, can call. Fayette Packing, and they could very well tell you, well, come see us in twelve months or eighteen months. And so especially during COVID, it was it was a challenge. So, um. I would like for us to to review this. I would like for us to state this, because I can tell you that the community wants it, the community needs it. Um, and I think it'll be providing a valuable service to the folk that will seek your 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 service. Um, I'll be prepared to do that today, I'm not quite sure. Um, that that we are, because there are some other I's we need to dot and T's that need to be crossed. So unfortunately for me, um, I'm a proponent of it, but we need to be a little bit further along before we address this for. So I.
He told the attorney general, we don't have anything to do.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna see what our attorney says first. And then we'll call the attorney general and tell them that our attorney Trump's here.
Well, you just found this question working, you, you're making sales.
I'm gonna do custom work at first, I would like to do USDA meat for sale after that. That kinda coincides with, you know, me having a ranch, I'd like to be able to make a living. I have four hundred fifty-nine acres and I can't make a living.
I I agree with you.
Working construction and work a ranch, and this is really difficult, and I think with that much land and that much effort and money and. That I've placed into that, you should be able to make a living.
I agree.
You're not on the state of federal, how do you rule?
No, sir.
I'd like to level table and uh continue to discuss sizes.
One of the things that I've, I wanna wanna talk to my colleagues about, um. Let's be, let's be very diligent when we table issues that. We've kinda gotten away from meetings, that we can discuss issues and and be educated a little bit better on solar farms and cattle ranches and. Uh, slaughter facilities, et cetera. So if we're gonna table these issues, let's make sure that we we make an effort. As a group to circle back and revisit them, you know, within a thirty years, so we can really sit down and 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 discuss it. So that when we come to these meetings, we're prepared to to bro in the affirmation or 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 vote it down. Um, because we're gonna have two issues that we really need to to address rather quickly. Cause I'd imagine their, the grant processes, their timelines and deadlines, I understand what you're talking.
I have uh only a couple of timelines and it's likely grants.
I I agree.
That fall off in two months if I'm not approved.
I agree, I agree.
I lose two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
All right, that's why I said what I said. So let's make sure that we take these into consideration. Is there a motion? I'm 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 open to to any.
I don't think they're leaving tables, so you know, for. This attorney general thing is pretty much.
Let, let me, let me, let me attempt to add just a little bit clarity in terms of why I wanted to table at least for thirty days. It gives us an opportunity to put a little bit more things in place. We still may come to the same conclusion that we want it, and I think it's needed. But what I don't wanna do is jump in and put something in place without us further discussing and see what else we need to add to it.
Isn't it be a good idea, according to Sheldon, to let the lawyer look at it?
Is thirty days gonna put you in a bind?
No, sixty days will put me in a bind enough.
What about it, Mr. Law?
We can, we 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 can tackle it in thirty days. We can tackle, we can come back, uh, but my thing is, I I know turning the, going back and forth with all of the, with the attorney general, state attorney general. So we we gonna let the, those people that are professional. So we, we're gonna let those people that are professionally trained in that area look at that and rules that and give us a determination.
This has come up somewhere before. He wouldn't bring an opinion on it.
Oh, it's, it's come up, it's come up rumors, Tim. That's just a recent, more, more recent opinion.
Well, I guess I make a motion that we table. However, I, I put a, I don't know, you can help me out on the wording of this. But it's to visit this no later than thirty days. Because, uh, uh, the petitioner is on a timeline as well and kind of be sympathetic to his situation.
I agree. I, I think that's, I think that's perfect.
I mean, the motion is, I mean, second.
Never second. On a favor? Uh, any other new business for the board? All right, let's, let's, uh, let's jump feet first into the whole business that is set before us. And before we do this, please indulge me and give me an opportunity to, uh, to articulate my point of view on a couple of things. We cannot go back and change what's already been dealt with in terms of solar farms. Um, new companies coming in, we've given them the guidelines. They're going to proceed based upon those guidelines. The resolution that is before us tonight is going to deal with how we move forward. I have thought about this just as much as everybody else here. I'm afraid about it. I've lost sleep on it. And I would like to present an option to my colleagues and also to my neighbors. We have recently elected six, seven new commissioners. We've just recently elected a new mayor. Change is coming. Sometimes a order for a county or municipality or business to move forward, sometimes you've got to stop, reassess things, take a step back. And that's what I want to propose. We have no idea how many solar farms the county needs. We have no idea how many of our citizens want them or don't want them. And I personally think that before we move forward on this resolution, that we should stop, assess where we want to be as a county, give our citizens an opportunity to speak with the newly elected officials, to express their concerns or their, uh, support as regards to solar farm. I would like to present a resolution to the board that we remove solar farms from, make sure that I say this right, Sheldon, because I need your advice, that we, we can't do a moratorium. But we can remove solar farms from being allowed in the county to give citizens an opportunity to express their concerns to their commissioners, give the citizen opportunity to present their resolutions to commissioners pro or for or against. And then based upon the direction that we decide to go as a group, with the citizens' input, the newly elected commissioners and the mayors, once those commissioners make a decision on what direction that we should go, then that comes back to this board and this body and we can make a decision on how to proceed with the resolutions. It gives us an opportunity to look at other resolutions that may be out there, other ideas. I personally think what Sheldon has done is absolutely perfect for us. But there are other ideas that we have not reviewed. And I think it gives the people in the community an opportunity to address this with the commissioners. It gives the new mayor an opportunity to address it. And if the citizens and our newly elected officials want to move forward, they'll vote on it. It comes back to us and then we can address it.
Will we put up something saying that we recommend that we send something out to all the citizens to allow them to comment on it?
Well, well, basically what, what happens if we approve the resolution that I set before you, it automatically goes back to the newly elected commissioners for their vote. And there's a timeframe. Well, that's, that's what we've been told. So what we're trying to do is give all the stakeholders an opportunity to have a seat at the table and to address it. Because whatever we decide today is how we're gonna move forward if we don't. And what I want to be able to do is take a step back. There's no solar farms that are gonna be presented. They won't be presented before the county until the commissioners vote on it. And it gives everybody a chance to deal with this issue.
Looking at it from the standpoint of not being for the solar farm or not being against the solar farm, when you open this up to public opinion, we've been fighting this for some time now. And, and we're just gonna put it on the table. Like I said, not for or against, but when you open it up to public opinion, you're gonna get a bunch of it. But the problem is, is about seventy-five percent of those opinions don't have a dog in that race. They don't own a piece of property, don't pay a nickel worth of taxes and all this kind of stuff. And you've got to deal with all that kind of stuff. That's, that's gonna be a bad issue. I mean, you fill this courtroom up in a public hearing. Seventy-five percent of them have not got a dog in the race as far as ownership or rights to do one way or the other. That's just my opinion.
And, and, and I respect that. And that's why I want us to have these type of dialogues. Because this is what's happened. There's a segment of stakeholders in this county that have not had an opportunity to address this. And, and six or seven of them just got elected. And, and what I am proposing that we become as transparent as we can. So people can say exactly what you just articulated. But there's people who are against it. There's people who are for. But if we move forward today, this is a done deal. And what I'm proposing is that we've got a new leadership in town, in, in the county. Give everybody an opportunity to sit down and discuss this very sensitive issue before us. Because our job is to approve or not approve resolutions. And I'm prepared to move forward with that approval because we have some good resolution in place. But my point is simply this, how many solar farms are we prepared to have in the county? How many do we need? What's the real benefit for them? What's the stop, if we do this, what's to stop ten solar farms from coming into the county tomorrow? The question, the answer to that is, there isn't anything to stop anybody. So where do we want to be as a county ten years from now, fifteen years from now? None of us in here, you know, created this. But what I want to be able to do is give everybody an opportunity to deal with it. Because it's now skin off our backs. If the citizens have a meeting with their respective commissioners, those commissioners meet and they vote on it. And they say, you know what, we want to move forward with solar farms, then guess what? We'll take his resolutions, other resolutions. We'll have meetings with the community, give them a chance to participate in this, and we'll move forward.
If, if a entity comes to the county and wants to place a solar farm, who's the person that would like to?
It comes to the zoning compliance office. That, that's where the zoning process starts. It had to get, uh, perfect through the zoning compliance office.
Okay, and then it comes here or the county board?
Ri- right. Depending, yeah, depending on the process, it would, uh, if, if, if they're, if they're, if you're talking about the solar farms, right, that process will start in the zoning compliance office. Uh, they will get an application for a use permitted on appeal. They're completed. And then, uh, they're going forward, borders on appeals. But the planning commission still has to, they still have the, uh, we've been given charge to review the site plans along with those, uh, supplements. So although borders on appeals looks at the particular use, whether or not they're granted use, planning commission will still be given charge to recommend on the, the site plan that, that comes along with it. So that's, that's the process right there.
That's clear first.
Right. It comes to that, according to.
Well, let's back up this a minute then. I guess I'm just too dense to comprehend all this. But, but you're saying if an entity comes down, it wants to put a solar farm in, it's gonna come to the board, right?
Right. They, they gotta, they gotta come, first they gotta come through the zoning compliance office and then get an application for a use permitted on appeal. Because now I think their use is permitted on appeal. Right.
But how come we've already got something going in and it's never come before this board? That's the thing.
Right.
And where, where you gonna get that?
There was an issue there. There, there were some issues, there were some issues there with it. Uh, I think that, uh, I, I, we're not shooting anybody out of the bus, but I think there was some little confusion there. Uh, the particular, uh, person in charge in the office at that particular time was under the, they had been told and trained from the person that they got the job from that, uh, the borders on appeals, they will look at the use permitted on appeal as well as the site plan. Although the resolution, the zoning resolution always read a little bit different from that. I think that was just, uh, something that happened erroneously and it just continued over time. And I, I think that that could be remedied and that could be remedied through text amendment or, or whatnot. Now, if the planning commission don't want anything to do with them, then we need to strike that part of the language that puts y'all as having autonomy to review the site plan and put strictly on borders on appeal.
Well, that's, that's a thought because my point is and was, if, if we adopt anything, we can be, you know, if they don't even come to us, they can still go in and already have. We've got to stop them point blank somewhere where it has to come to here. Because we've already had something to go in, like I said. It's never made it here so why are we worried about this if we're gonna be on the road anyway?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Barrett. Uh, but I think that what's in the zoning resolution are, is, is basically buttressing your point and buttressing the protection. Basically, the way it is now, uh, they still, although they get the use permitted on appeal or whatever, whatever from the borders on appeals, that, that doesn't prove that once they get the use permitted on appeal for borders on appeals, that you all have to approve the site plan. I know it, it, it seems like we have to at times. But it's kind of hard not to approve once they've already got the approval from borders on appeals. But currently, you all still have charge to, uh, review the site plan. And if it needs to, the only reason why we approved the site plan the last time because it met the regulations. I got one in the books. I didn't want to recommend for that. But I was horrified by the regulations. They met the regulations.
I understand that. We read it. I understand that. But my point is still, we sit here and put our heads against the wall trying to work this thing out and they still win anyway. They already done it.
Well, I think that's basically what happened in years past. I think now we've been in court and I think everybody understands what, what the resolution, how it reads. I think that, no, I think that even if it's still, they're still going through borders on appeals, that's not an ending process. They still gotta come back to the planning commission.
Those that's already in will come up here.
Yeah, those are already in. Yeah, I, you know, that, that's, that's lost cause.
Kind of timeframe are you talking about as far as length of time that we're gonna potentially accept no applications? What is, what you're thinking on that? It's just how we're.
Oh, my personal, I want to kill it. Let's be clear. What I'm proposing today is that we remove solar farms. We give everybody an opportunity to express their desire for or against to our newly elected officials. The county then tells us what direction they want us to proceed as a board. It gives us an opportunity to look at all, uh, if they say they want to move forward, gives us an opportunity to take other things into consideration as we review and then we'll move forward. Because at that point, we don't have anybody coming before us with these, these solar farms. We need to fix this. We need to make sure that this is the direction the county wants to go. Because if we go down this road, let's be clear. If all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, if somebody comes in and they meet it, they, they can put a solar farm up. And so.
That's the case right now.
Right, that's the case right now, sir. That's the case right now. And that's why I say we need to address this in order to move forward. You know, is this something that we really want to do as a county? I understand, sir, what your, your, your point is. You know, we did all this, but we've had one or two, three solar farms here. But let's not sit here five years from now and we've got eight and we missed the opportunity to deal with this on the front end. Does Hardeman County, the citizens of Hardeman County, want five of these, ten of these? Do we want this door to remain open? And we need to assess that. We need to ask everybody, the citizens, our leadership, is this what we want? Because if we vote on this, that is off the table. That's all I'm asking. It gives everybody a chance to take a deep breath, a breath and start over and potentially correct some of the wrong.
So as it stands now, if we adopt, or if we go with this route, somebody comes in, Lily can't even, I mean, she can say we don't take applications. I mean, as far as for a solar farm, would that, would that be fair to say?
Well, here's the, here's the deal. With all this, if we go with Mr. Moore's suggestion tonight, I have to prepare a resolution and y'all have to decide on whether or not y'all want to see that resolution before it goes to county commission. Or y'all are just, uh, trust me enough to just prepare the resolution to send to the county commission. You know, it takes about, uh, a third of day, uh, hearing on those zoning matters on fifteen, I think it's, thirty days. Whatever it is for your public hearing. And I think, uh, until that time, the current law is still gonna be the law until the county commission acts on that resolution to revoke those regulations. So we have to just hope and pray, uh, if we're against solar farms, not to be prejudiced. But if, if, if we are against them, we just gotta hope and pray in that timeframe between the time that the, uh, resolution is drafted and the county commission acts upon it, that you'll have an applicant, uh, in between. Until that time, we still have to go by the process on what's on the books.
Well, you've been looking forty-five, sixty days lapse time right there because county commission meeting's next week. So you can't do anything there because you don't have time to have, you know, hearing and so forth and so on. And you're looking at another thirty days. So you're looking forty-five, sixty days.
Can we have a moratorium, uh, well, a temporary moratorium until we give them a chance to, to review it?
Now, that, that's a question for your lawyer, but I would say that, uh, I would question the legality of that. Uh, because if it's a permitted use or a use permitted on appeal, uh, putting a moratorium on it might seem arbitrary and egregious. Although I know what the intent is, is to further study and to get it right and get your resolution right. Uh, I would just feel comfortable if, if the attorney would take a look and give you an opinion for a moratorium concern because I have to question the legality.
Let, let, I'm, I'm gonna do something that I normally don't do. But since we've already had a citizen get up and talk today, you seem to have, I don't want to say an opinion, but you seem to have a point of view on the question that was just asked.
Yes, sir.
Would the board grant me the latitude of giving him an opportunity to speak a minute on, on addressing this?
Absolutely.
Is there any objection?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I consider you of the right tribe. I think, I've said this all along since it started, so I appreciate this opportunity. Mr. Merrill had made a comment, if something's not in our zoning ordinance, therefore it can't be addressed in the earlier issue. But I will tell you, I've always said it's better to have things in our ordinance with some stuff set up than none at all. Because I've done this. I've gone where it's not there because I have a legitimate. I've gone where it's not there because I have a legitimate business and you can't keep me from doing business anywhere and they have had to make spots for me. You don't wanna be in a position with no stuff when we got this much federal money coming in and something. We need a zoning, a solar ordinance, okay? So I think that's a bad idea. Because people with money can come in here and put the, and you will create an ordinance if it's just sort of the first round out, they may get whatever they want, then you'll learn your lesson, but. It can be done, you know, even though our, our ordinance says, if it's not in permitted use, it's not in use on appeal, it is strictly prohibited. We adopted that. But you can't keep a legitimate business, Supreme Court has ruled this, and people don't exercise, people with money can do it, I'm telling you, it'll happen. So I think we're putting ourselves in a bad situation to take that out, okay, for that reason. In regard to what you talked about, you hit it, moratorium, I think is it, but a moratorium is a zoning amendment. Because it's regarding zoning, it's gotta be handled as an amendment, therefore it has to be a resolution. And it has to be voted upon and it has to go to the commission for a public hearing and then they have to vote on, even if it's, you say a one-year moratorium on solar. That gives us time to work it out. And I've been, I tried that in February and. They decided to do something illegal in the board and said, we're just gonna make the zoning appeal board not be able to vote for thirty days. Well, they can't, they don't have any authority of the zoning appeal board, that's a statutory board, but that was an illegal act, they, they avoided us on moratorium. So they can't just put a moratorium on anything because it is technically, you're affecting the zoning ordinance. I've done this, I'm telling you. So it's gotta be treated as an amendment, he knows the procedure for amendment, it takes a resolution. And a resolution is simply first five, six paragraphs, whereas, 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 he can draft that thing, I can draft that thing that I have to you tomorrow morning. Okay, now, you're in a meeting right now, it's scheduled meeting. You can extend this meeting. Right now, y'all can vote to say, we're gonna extend this meeting, you haven't adjourned it, and you can come back tomorrow. With that resolution and vote on it. As a moratorium, send it to the county commission, we're gonna make this, this, Tuesday's their meeting, won't make it. But they gotta give fifteen-day notice of a public hearing before October meeting, and they can move the October meeting up a week or two and speed the process up, so. You know, you could technically by October fifteenth have a one-year moratorium, everybody just take a breath and figure this thing out. Tell me where I'm wrong. No, no, I mean, I'm.
Back, back, back to Mr. Mitchell, uh, I would just feel more comfortable, uh, you know, there's a lot of them chatted out there. I go by the law, and I would prefer your attorney to get that, the, the pause of drafting a, a moratorium. All that because you could be opening up a whole legal, a whole can of, uh, worms going that route. Uh, because it's, it's a use. Now, if you wanna do a moratorium, he's correct in the sense that it needs to be presented in a. Resolution format, we can do it out of the way. I just, before you say moratorium, it's just, it's either or. If you're gonna do a resolution, doing away with the, uh, solar farms, that's quote unquote, it, it's no moratorium, you're just doing away with it. If you do a moratorium on there, I don't know whether the legal precedent, you have a legal precedent to, to proceed forward with that. That's why we just wanted the, the opinion of your attorney, make sure that you're on good ground, uh, to go that route. Uh, prior to you, you doing that because the last thing you're gonna do is to wind up in court.
That's correct, sir, yes. I mean, but the moratorium is not on anything but. You take a moratorium, we're not accepting applications, that's where you're limited to. We can accept, no, no, that, so they, we can have a hundred applications waiting in a year, you have to deal with it. But that's where you stop, the moratorium is we're taking a moratorium on the app, on the application for solar. That gives us time and it's not arbitrary and prejudicial and illegal, that's what you were looking for. Because we have a reason for doing that, because we don't know these things are, are proven to affect our community as a whole. And that's our defense, we, that's what your planning commission, your other zoning commission, your planning commission, we got a plan for all this stuff. And so that's what we're doing. There, Fayette County had, what, a moratorium for, had two one-year moratoriums and a. Six-month moratorium in the last four years. It's, it's a simple, we're not asking you a moratorium on the whole zone in order. One thing, application on solar, very simple thing. I think we got a county attorney now, maybe, I'm not sure. Uh, I think we got a real one, not just a rental, call, uh, so maybe, uh, that can be done, but again. The way you don't have to stop and re-advertise this meeting, I'm just giving you a hint on how you can do this. You, Robert Truman Lord has allowed you to extend this meeting somewhere else, you know, beyond this date. It's just, and adjournments, just like you were having a convention and you keep your meeting going. You can do that. So we don't have to reconvene into a meeting and give notice and start all this and you blow another several weeks. But it may take that if your attorney wants to look at and really hammer this out, but I think you're on the right track of that. But I do think you need something in there because to take solar out is an amendment, same thing. You've gotta draft that resolution to remove solar from FAR use on appeal, I one, I two, and I three. And then it go, it's a regular amendment, just like you're doing right, the same process you're doing to put something in there is the same thing you gotta do to take it out. You can't just say, I voted out, and it's gotta go before the commission and have a public hearing, the same process, nothing changes in the process. And a moratorium, people don't understand that, it has, it, it has to be considered a, an amendment. Because it is dealing with the zoning ordinance, so it is, it's gonna follow that process.
Well, in fact, uh, I, I would say Mr. Chairman has the discretion to call, a call meeting, uh, whenever necessary. And I think that he can use a, a call meeting to deliberate this solely for this purpose and a meeting can be a workshop. Uh, there, there are several things to do it. Now, that was a pretty slick way if you said that I, I had a continuing meeting when I called the meeting. I, I, I kinda like that, that's pretty clever, but, uh, you don't necessarily have to do it that way. You can call a call meetings, a special call meeting solely for this purpose, solely to tackle this and it can be a community forum. However, however, we need to come together to work and, or committee with the county commission, the public, our committee. And to re, sit down and resolve, uh, this issue on how to move forward. We'll, we're entertaining highly more to go, highly more to proceed. We hit it.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in feedback from my colleagues. My, I, I, I threw something against the wall. And, and my, my position is I would like to give all of us, the community and our community to address this. The new leadership to make some determinations on what direction we wanna go as a county, and I think we have time to do that. But if we vote today on affirmation on this resolution, um, I think the door will be shut. And we miss an opportunity to engage folk who are new to their positions and continue to engage the community. You know, I know there's, I, I think there's a community resolution that's been floating around. None of us here have seen it. We, we haven't seen it and it gives us an opportunity. There may be things in there that we adopt, there may be things that, may be things that.
The county commissioner then introduced that, and it was supposed to have been here by our laws and it never showed up.
Well, uh, uh, we're gonna, but, but the reality is this, we haven't seen it. I would like for us to take a step back, my recommendation. Just one man on, on this board, and let's have some constructive dialogue. And figure out what direction does the county want to go as relates to solar. There's gonna be a lot of federal grants, a lot of federal money coming down, there's a lot of things that could potentially benefit this county. But I think we're at a point where we need to slow down, discuss it, and figure out what's the best way to move forward. Now, how we go about to get there, I'm not an expert on figuring it out. That's why, where we need help from you guys, if that's the direction we wanna go. If we decide we wanna move forward a border resolution, hey, I'll shut up. And let's move on.
The way I'm looking at it is Mr. Merrill's agency is what we rely on. Because all this, all this right here is beyond me and I think it's beyond most of us, and he's the agency we rely on. So my personal opinion is, is we need to respect his opinion and I'd like to have his opinion on it. In which direction we need to go to get there. Is that true? Is that something that we can?
That, that's, that's fine, I mean.
He's the only person we've got right here.
Uh, sir, I respect, I, I think that's a.
And we got, and we got to help, if we do something, we gotta have backup, and his agency is gonna be the backup.
Well, I'm, I agree a hundred percent of what Mr. Chair has said. I mean, that, that's where I am. I, I, I would love, we are, you know, would love to get the person, people's opinion about how we deal with this, we all would. And, but I also agree with Mr. Russell and it scares me to the fact that if we, that, you know, we, we don't. We have to follow the process and then somebody comes in, submits an application in a loophole and we just, boom, we're under the old code. And we could have what happened in, you know, the past happen again, that scares me too, but at the same time. The, the moratorium, I, I know Fayette County, as Mike said, did that again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not, you know. I'm just, I don't know the process, but I love what Mr. Chairman ha, is sitting here offering and I agree with that wholeheartedly. However, I see Mr. Russell's point and so I guess I'm not even here.
Well, I, it, it is still there. Alright.
Alright. Tell us what direction we can go to get to the same place he's saying.
The direction we can go to get to where Mr. Moore is going, keep this in mind, I'm not a selfish person. If, if it's not my ball, if, if it's my ball and somebody else wants the ball, I, I know it's my ball, I'm going home. I'm not that type of person. Uh, I've been doing this twenty-three years, uh, went to school for planning, I think I know what I'm doing, but I think I'm also smart enough. To incorporate other ideas that we hadn't even thought about or hadn't seen. So with that, the way we get to where Mr. Moore is talking about incorporating what you're talking about, Mr. Barry, is how about? We just have a call meeting, a, a work session that have all resolutions on the table. Uh, the resolution that was presented by our county commission, uh, the rest, the both resolutions that our agency prepared. We just sit back, you know, we crack jokes, we look at this thing, with details on, we look at this thing and get serious. And, and we just, we can measure, we can take one, throw one in the garbage, but at the end of the day, we all leave as neighbors and I hope they're friends. And then I think that that's the way, uh, to do that, and I think we need to do that in a timely fashion. And I think we need to do this before Christmas, we need to wrap this up before Christmas, just get this thing over with, so.
Absolutely, we've been, as you said, kicking the can down the road and, uh.
So I have.
For, for a while, so.
We just gotta agree upon a date that we all, everybody's scheduled to meet, uh. I, I, you know, we got another planner in the office, although he has meetings, we can, we can try to accommodate if we can, if I can push my other meetings off. To accommodate if it's a, a, gonna be a conflict in a meeting date with me, uh, we can see what we can do, or we're gonna try to accommodate. We need to resolve this and we need to do it peacefully and, and I think we can do it friendly and I, I think that, uh, that's the way to go. Did I answer your question, Mr. DeBarry?
Yeah, but I, if it gets to the point where we do have a column meeting or whatever and you have to work around a schedule. Uh, I don't really know how I wanna put this, but, uh, I don't think we need to substitute.
I'll be here. We'll, we'll make it, we, we'll make it happen, uh, we just, we just, I, I just have to make sure we juggle some things around. So, Mr. Moore, that's gonna take you and I working in tandem and, uh, looking at our calendars and, uh, uh, picking out a date. When, when, when I'm available or if the community is not that heavy on the agenda or not gonna have a agenda for that particular month. We cancel that meeting and we make sure to, uh, we take care of all of the county.
What kind of timeframe you think?
I, I, I wanna deal with, I, I wanna deal with this immediately. But I also wanna make sure that my colleagues are clear. I understand that the board's wanting to meet and, and that's fine. Because we, we, we agree to address these issues, but I also wanna make sure that the citizens. Everybody, not just the ones that have been showing up to, to the meeting, expressing concern and, and in some case opposition. But I want everybody to have an opportunity to go to their representative. And have meaningful dialogue, so everybody is operating openly. I don't want somebody to say, well, I didn't know. Let's get all the stakeholders on a, around the table so we all can move forward in one direction.
When you start, uh, which, I mean, I go along with your idea, but when you start dealing with that, you're gonna be looking at a long timeframe. It's not, you're not gonna be able to.
That, that's just, that's just where Eddie Moore stands. Now, you, you can't get everything. However, I just wanna make sure that nobody says, well, I didn't know. And if somebody has an opposition to this or, or, or for this, that they get an opportunity to express it. Now, whether it happens or not, I'm setting my peace.
Well, that's a great idea because it takes a monkey off our back.
Well, and, and, and quite frankly, to be quite, uh, and I don't mean any disrespect to any of my colleagues or any of my neighbors. That's the least of my concerns. If somebody upset with the decisions we make, etc. We gotta do what's in the best interest of the county. Sometimes that puts us in a favorable position, sometimes in an unfavorable position. And we all, as men and women, we accept that responsibility when we decide to volunteer because we, none of us are here because we live off that fifty dollars a month. It doesn't pay for, it doesn't pay for the gas that it takes to get it.
Are you talking about a public hearing, Matt?
No, what, what I'm talking about is. Postponing this so that we get other ideas on the table. So that our newly elected leaders get an opportunity to grasp the challenges that are before them. Because some of them have no idea of what we're dealing with and the complexity of what we're dealing with. And quite frankly, don't know what the heck we do, period.
Right, and I suggest I do transparent as a peer.
And that may be the case, but for those twenty percent that do, I wanna make sure that nobody ever, 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 ever says again. And, in, in their heart and in their mind that we have not been transparent and we have not taken. The accounting business at heart and we're trying to move forward in the best interest of the county. And the only way to do that is to slow down, take a step back and have open dialogue. Now, whether that's a week, two weeks, I'm open, but I'm the kinda guy that likes to get in it, let's get muddy, get it done, take charge, move forward.
But the thing of it is how we're gonna get the communication between us and the public, that's gonna be the issue.
How is the question I have, what is the process by which you open this up, whether from you or?
And you're looking at a long timeframe, dude. In my opinion, because out of where you're gonna get.
You're gonna have to advertise that it's gonna be a, a public planning commission, a workshop on a discussion of, of solar farm.
Man, my point is, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative about everything that comes up, but I live in Hornsby and Matt lives in Hornsby. If Matt and I get together and we put it on the radio and the ball or bulletin and every, all national news, if we're gonna have. A little meeting at City Hall in Hornsby to discuss the solar farm issue, there might be five people there. Am I right or wrong, right? I mean, that's the issue, and some communities, it's gonna be different.
Yes.
Because they're the communities that's kinda being affected for this, I understand that.
And, and, and same thing with meat processing, same thing with somebody wants to open up a dress shop, in certain communities, it's no big deal.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could we put an ad in the paper? And I know, Mr. DeBarry, you don't like a lot of people to call your phone, you don't do email. I don't think you read the newspaper, but say, maybe you get people to mail a letter or drop letters off at your town hall. To read, give us your opinion, yes or no, what's your opinion on solar farms, okay? Say this commissioner has Facebook, I know a lot of the new county commissioners have Facebook page that they ran advertising on. Just put a question on that, the people that do Facebook, those commissioners, what is your opinion? Tell me, yes or no, what is your opinion on Facebook? Everybody divided different, if you, Mr. Moore, work better with email, you know, could that be, you know, email, Mr. Moore? I mean, could we?
Let, let, let me, let me say this, the, the, there is a way to address that. And address your concerns. I'm more concerned with the fact that we didn't go through this process before we got to this point. So whatever it takes to do what we've had to do. So whatever it takes to do what we've had to do, let's figure it out. Let's just figure it out. You got a staff, you got, we got a staff. We, you're our leader, let's figure out how do we get to that point. Because I agree, it goes back to what you said before. If we would've done, if we would've washed our hands before we got here, you know, we, 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 our hands would be ripped dirty now. So let's slow down and figure out, how do we get people in, how do we get this up in a timely manner? Let's slow down and figure that out. I don't have the answers to it. And again, this is, this is just any time. There's other board members, my vote doesn't count any more than yours. If anybody has had another idea that gets us past where we are, so that we, in our hearts and minds, know for a fact that we've listened to all the options, we got all the stakeholders at the table, and we can move forward all on the same bus palling down the same street, I'm fine with it. I should think we're here.
I think for as advertisement is concerned, everything, everything is on, on board. Facebook, uh, the, 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 the bulletin times, uh, everything that we can, yeah, I think that's a, a great suggestion. Uh, that came from, uh, the, the, uh, excuse me, the young lady in the audience, I think that that's a, a great, a stood idea. It'd be, it'd be, it'd, it'd be good, whole grade, if the county had a Facebook account, and that could be posed on one deal, as opposed of all of the commissioners having to use their personal Facebook accounts about that particular question, on that one particular question. But I think, uh, all avenues, as far as that advertisement, I think that's, that's the only way you're gonna get the people here, and then that might not even.
Well, I know next Tuesday night is a commissioners meeting, and we got a couple commissioners here tonight. Uh, and as the solid waste director, plus, uh, Mayor Pulse has asked me to be in the interim, zoning, uh, compliance officer, or look over the department. So I would be glad or willing, if you gave me the message you want me to give, to address the commissioners, and let them know this, and at the same time, they usually livestream the meeting, put it out to the public. You know, that, that, I mean, I know that goes out, a lot of folks follow, you know, every string to it a lot of times. But I think you'd never go wrong by including these new commissioners, and, and helping them have that ability to reach into their communities. That helps them. That, that is, that is the reason they ran for office, so.
And most of the people who care are gonna watch that livestream, or at least, at the very least, either come to.
Your stakeholders will.
Or take, 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 ask their commissioner, hey, what went on?
That's right.
I mean, you know.
Like I said, you got such a, a large portion, as he said, don't care, could care less. You've got a certain amount of concerned citizens, and you've got a lot more unconcerned citizens than you do concerned citizens, at a point.
But like, when I give the, uh, my address, tell the commissioners about the solid waste, tell them about the zoning, I'll be glad to say, this is an issue that's of, of urgent, uh, attention. This, this is. I, I mean, 'cause it is. I mean, I know we're on, we're on timeline, we need to do it quickly.
From a business perspective, I, 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 I'm trying to figure out farming, and I must admit, from a business standpoint, it's, it's, it's kicking my butt. But all I've ever done is, is, is run organizations. And the problem I have with the direction to go that the county's going right now, and I love being here, I've only been here five years. The community's welcoming me with open arms, and it's been a blessing to live here. But when it comes to solar farms, there are fundamental questions that I don't have answers to. You know, why are we doing this? How many are we doing this? What financial benefit is it to the county from a business perspective? Just certain basic things that I, as a business person, a businessman, would wanna know, not to mention the community side of it, and the fact that I live here. That I think that we all wanna know, wanna know the answers. And if I'm a commissioner, representing my constituents and leading this county forward, I would wanna know the answers to those, that stuff as well. So are we talking about ten of these? Are we talking about fifteen of these? How do you deal with it? What's the long-term plan as it relates to solar farms for Hardman County?
He, he, here's the deal, now, I, I'm gonna start off by saying I'm a gas man. But, uh, you know the, the, the issues that's going on nationally. They want to convert vehicles to, to become electric and all this other kind of stuff, so they're making it advantageous through these grants, uh, for that, to, to, to come into fruition. That's why some things are getting fast-tracked, uh, you, you have all these solar farms popping up, and everybody, it's to accommodate, that, not the electric vehicle push along with other things. Some people believe in that climate change stuff and all this other kind of stuff. I don't wanna get political and go on that, that discussion, 'cause that'll lead us into a dark hole. All I'm saying is, in order to come out of, this is, this is the reason why there's so much alacrity or eagerness to get solar farms in rural communities, uh, because of that grant money coming down to, to help facilitate some of these desires of, of some in the government, to electrify everything, as opposed of utilizing the fossil fuels that we're accustomed to. I'm not gonna get into whether or not that's a good idea, I'm just gonna say that I hope gas stations stay open as long as I'm still there. With that being said, those are, those are some of the reasons why the solar farm are becoming a part of it. And we've got to decide on whether or not we're gonna accommodate, or we're gonna keep our pastures, 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 our, uh, great trees, our great trees, and our great river, our great river. If we don't want that, if we don't want, uh, to roll down our countryside and there go a whole bunch of, uh, photovoltaic, photovoltaic panels there, that, they're being designed now where the brightness, uh, is, is, is not so bright, where it's it causing glare and causing people to be blinded as they're coming down, they, they changed that. However, if there's still somebody that don't wanna see that, don't want, I can understand that too, that's a problem. Uh, we just need to, as a whole, get together, decide in what direction we're gonna go in, and we just need to come up with the applicable resolution to budget that, and that just might be, uh, to do away with them all. If that's, if that's the majority of the, uh, the public senate. However, we're here to help you, we're here to assist you in the creating of the resolution that you want.
This is, this is, and, and I, I know we should've been, concluded, I made it some time ago, but I think this issue deserves the dialogue that we have. Just, just envision this, just bear with me a second. Uh, and I use myself as an example. I don't live in Hardman County. Just say, I don't live in Hardman County. I live in Memphis. But I have the financial wherewithal to come to Hardman County and buy three thousand acres, with the sole intention to put as many solar panels on that farm. And I'm never gonna stop and, 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 uh, step a foot in Hardman County. That can happen. And I can care less about you, you, and you, 'cause what's what, I'm not your neighbor. I'm not gonna see you at church, I'm not gonna see you at the gas station, I'm not gonna see you driving down the street. You are no concern to me on, unless you can help me make money. So the question becomes, what direction do we wanna take, Hardman County? And I'm talking about our leaders. Now, from this board, you know, once it gets to us, you know, our personal opinion goes out the window. That's, that's the task that we, when we signed up for this, we, we, we set our personal opinion at the door, we'll come in, and we're gonna vote, and move the county forward, and put together resolutions, and deal with issues to move the county forward. But as a citizen, I don't necessarily like the fact that, you know, Sheldon just won the lottery, and he wants to come in and buy five thousand acres and, and do whatever he wants as it relates to solar. I would like to have an idea of what our leaders are planning for the county as it relates to this industry. And I don't think it's wrong for me to ask that, as a citizen.
I would suggest that we let Mr. Graves present, Commissioner Russell, and, you know, maybe him. And I'm not against having a call meeting in two weeks, something like that, but I'll come, but we need to get it done.
Can, can, I, I think I've, I've presented this before, is there any way that we could, for those of us who, who, who live far away, or travel, or have other issues, I mean, Zoom, what, what, one thing COVID has taught us is that y'all don't have to look at my ugly face sitting here, you don't have to sit next to me. There's ways that we could have meetings in which we're not all in the same room. And we need to start exploring some of those things, especially on issues like this. If we had other ways to meet and discuss issues.
If you're talking about Zoom, I'll have to kill somebody else's house.
Well, I'm, I'm just, there's, there's gotta be other ways that.
Mr. Moore, that is illegal in the state of Tennessee, it's against sunshine, you cannot attend one of these meetings. But COVID was in place, executive orders, that's the only time you could do that. You cannot have a public meeting, if, if, now, if it's gonna be a public meeting, that you're talking about. And Mr. Merrill was asked to testify on this, and he was unsure, and, because, and, but he was questioned in a, in a manner, and they said, they mentioned COVID, and so it kinda confused him, but you cannot participate in a public meeting on this board from somewhere out of this room. Wow.
Uh, excuse me, I think we had a good outcome in that meeting, and I think that, uh.
You, you said you weren't sure.
I might.
Yeah, a, a, and, and, and so, you know, there, yes, it's, it's, it's in the sunshine law, and I, I'll be glad to email y'all and all that, but that's what I'm getting at, is, is she, you were questioned first, you were questioned twice, once was about COVID, and, and that's where you weren't sure, it goes to county, you had to go. And it was regarding a meeting that he wasn't here at. And, 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 but it was, he was supposed to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Well, my, my, my point is, among the other fifty million things that you two have to do, it would be a good option to figure out, if, if we have an opportunity to meet, but, but options would be, lots of options. Colleagues, um, I'm sorry for throwing you guys a curveball. I apologize if, if I caught some of you off guard. However, as your neighbor, um, you know, I felt the need to, to speak my, my piece, and, um, it's not here, let's deal with it. Um, we could move forward, or we could decide to, um, take a step back and really, really, really pause for a second and figure out what direction we wanna go in.
Well, I hope we can do it, and I hope we can get some input into it, because the mister sitting back there in the back can relate to what I'm gonna say, there's plenty of times when you have to vote on something, you wish you'd had some input into it, right? Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's one way of putting it, it takes the monkey off our back. I, I mean that literally, uh, because you're sitting up there voting on something that popped up that night.
Yes.
And you don't know whether, you don't know how your constituents might feel about it, you just make a decision and go with it, whether you're right or wrong, right Bob?
That's, and I think this, what we're proposing, gives you guys the opportunity to listen, and make it an informed decision, and then tell us, I mean, what you want us to do, and that's via vote.
I mean, it certainly may great if we had the input into it, and, and a hundred people showed up out here, and ninety of them says, do away with the solar farms a hundred percent, and that's the way we vote, right Bob?
It's not easy to slow it down.
Right, but then on the other hand, if we had a hundred, and ninety of them said the other way, then, you know, there you go. It still might not be your personal opinion, but if you go in your constituents, you're gonna vote the other way.
That's right. If the kids, if your kids going like a storm, we might hate ourselves a lot, and have a lecture.
So how do, how do we wrap this up?
I guess we're tied.
I've talked enough, I'm confused.
So there's, there's no way that we can articulate what Mr. Chairman says in the form of suspension of any kind of new applications unless it goes through the process.
I would say, check, if your attorney, uh, feels comfortable with it, uh, that's something you can look at, but right now, I would say that, uh, that's a question I would think, uh, unless you pass a resolution, uh, to do so. I, I, I would say that, uh, the question came up in the county, uh, well, uh, a lot of development is going on nowadays, and I think y'all know what kinda I'm talking about without me giving them up. The same question about a moratorium came up on some homes that are mobile, uh, tra- that travel, that the word travel is in. And there was a particular leader that wanted to impose a moratorium for a timeframe, and that county attorney, uh, stated that, that there might be some issues legally with that, and they decided not to go in that regard. That's the only reason why I would say I'd defer to the attorney before you go that route. I understand where you wanna go, I, I kinda agree with it, I just don't want us to, to, you know, uh, be contrary to the, any legal laws out there, or precedent.
Is, is that a call that you make, that a call that a staff makes?
That's a, that's a, that's a county mayor decision, because I would, and a county commissioner's decision, or the county, and it's not my decision.
Is there, is that?
'Cause I don't pay your lawyer.
Would, would you be so kind to reach out to your colleagues and, and, and present this to the attorney, so that it can advise us on how to move forward? Uh, we, we've heard his recommendation, and I appreciate it. I, I, I think the moratorium, based upon what we've heard, may be an option. But to make sure that we're all covered, 'cause I think we all are on the same page here for the first time as it relates to this issue, or at least reading from the same head. But we gotta get this advice, and you have access, being a commissioner, uh, to the, the attorney and, and to the.
That's the problem, we don't have an attorney, we won't have an attorney to maybe choose to deny if we vote the attorney in.
Well, I, I, I don't, a, a, again, we're not, we're not running a sprint, I don't think it's gonna be soft overnight.
Well, we've been talking about the timeframe being such urgency, that's what has been my issue all the time. Everything we're talking about is, is entered into a negative timeframe. It's gonna take time to do it, regardless of how we go.
I'd rather take the time.
Well, I understand that.
And get it right, and, and go the way we're going right now, because we're going too fast down the wrong road, if you ask my opinion.
What we gonna do with it tonight?
We're gonna table, well, I do not want the resolution that we're to discuss tonight to come before the board. So whatever I need to do, or we need to do as a board, so that we don't vote on this resolution, we need to, 'cause once we vote on this resolution, everything we just talked about for the last hour, because we.
All right, if we, if we voted on the resolution, we'd be, all right, we got resolution.
You got two options.
We got one option, is any one of them is, is option one, is it in place?
Uh, no.
One of those options.
No, no, all our options are, make better what we already have.
So then therefore we can table both of these and still have the one that we got in place, right?
That's correct, if you don't, if, if you don't, if you table these.
We still got the other place.
You still got the one that's in place now.
And it's, it's a lesser resolution than these two are, right?
That's correct. Unless you all want a resolution to do away with them altogether, or we get the opinion that it's okay to do a moratorium on them all together, uh, uh, you know, either way, either one of those resolutions, it's still gonna take time, still gonna have to come back, still got to send it to the county commissioner.
Let's gotta have a public hearing.
Let me see if I can make a motion. Articulate a motion that encompass what we're trying to accomplish, so we can move forward. I would like to make a motion that we seek the advice of the county attorney, once he or she is, is appointed or approved by the commissioner, to give us advice on whether or not we can pass a resolution, or propose a resolution for a moratorium on not, s- not voting on or accepting
New.
new solar application for a twelve-month period. Did that come off my tongue right? Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Eyes out. Thank you for listening, thank you for understanding, and more importantly, thank you for working with me to try to get this out. I think the county is in a better place than possibly.
Gentlemen, for Mr. Blue, we just have to call a lawyer Tuesday night. Gentlemen, for Mr., we'll just have to call a lawyer Tuesday night.
Any other business?
I understand there will be one here, I just want to.
Know the business, motion for a German?
So moved.
Sure.